Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rennie.
Present.
We have a call. We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community, God. Please keep us safe and thank you for your grace and your mercy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any changes or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Public hearings, those will come with the items to be discussed. Citizen comments, Ms. Johnson, do we have any?
None tonight.
I would like to make a comment as a citizen. Thank goodness the post office is back up and running again, and they've done a great job in doing that. And I also understand that our very own city manager has been nominated as the hometown hero. So congratulations.
Thank you. It's pretty entertaining.
Item seven, public announcements. There's a proclamation for drug overdose awareness. Vice Mayor, if you will read the proclamation, please.
Whereas overdose deaths continue to tragically take the lives of too many Tennesseans, causing hurt, pain, sorrow, and loss of thousands of families and community across the state. And whereas rates of overdose and resulting deaths continue to rise sharply, driven by an influx of illicit fentanyl into our state. And whereas efforts to educate, equip, and empower people to respond to an overdose, reverse it, and save a life are reaching hundreds of thousands of Tennesseans. And whereas dedicated professionals who have personal experience of substance abuse and have achieved a new life in recovery are using their past and purpose to change the lives of others. And whereas Tennessee communities are standing up to address the underlying causes of addiction and recognizing the impact of factors like adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, to break the cycle of addiction. And whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is an opportunity for all Tennesseans to stand beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and those who have a substance use disorder and are diligently working towards recovery. Now therefore, as Vice Mayor of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, I do hereby recognize August 31st, 2022 as Overdose Awareness Day.
Lindsey.
So Lindsey is the Director of our Anti-Drug Coalition in Williamson County. So I would like to present this certificate to you on behalf of the mayor. Thank you so much.
City events, Mr. Ross.
Good evening. The next event that we have coming up is Saturday, September 17th, Movie in a Park. We're going to be showing the movie Lego. And then the next big event is our Arts and Crafts Fair. We're still accepting applications for that event. If you'd like to be a vendor for that event, please come by City Hall or you may contact me directly. Also, Vice Mayor, you had a question about the start time for the tree lighting ceremony. That start time is going to be at 2:00, and it's going to be from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. with the tree lighting to begin at 5:30.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Staff, comments, and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, are you wearing all the hats tonight?
Yes, Mayor.
Fire report.
Yes, our fire report for the month, for the month of July, total fire calls were 129. That's up above 103 for July of 2021. This is the first month this year where we've been, we've seen an increase. As we've discussed in the last couple of meetings, we expected that that was going to take place at some point. We did have a surprising number of calls at one residential development during the month of July. That seemed to have tapered off. But the majority of the increase that we saw was really in one subdivision. We're working to kind of get an idea for what that was. But nothing substantial, just a number of calls for service, most medical calls. The call breakdown, as you can see, the majority of our calls, as is the case, are assistance to EMS, 73%. The remainder of our calls are relatively unchanged from percentage and number of calls that we see each month. Other than the increase in the calls, our service volume has been just about the same. The heat map that you'll see on the next page, you can see where we still, around City Hall, the main thoroughfare on Highway 100 is the most, in the area, the most need for service calls for the fire department. We are starting to see an increase in calls along the interstate, but we think that that's going to slow down some once we get out of the summer months and get into just regular annual travel and not have so much interstate travel as we go through. Everything else is pretty standard on our heat map for the month as we see each month. We had, on the next page, we had 313 hours of training for the month, which is a good month for us for our training. We do attempt to do as much train-the-trainer work as we can and do that in-house. But our fire department does place a heavy focus and importance on training. We're glad to see those hours each and every month. Significant events for July, 23 overlapping incidents. As you may recall, overlapping incidents are when we are on one call and receive another call. We had two automatic and mutual aid events to surrounding departments. Three incidents where a fire was extinguished, two patients requiring extrication from a motor vehicle accident on I-40. That's part of the heat map that you saw on the I-40 corridor on the previous page. Motor vehicle accident versus a pedestrian on I-40, and then nine first aid interactions at the July 3rd event. Obviously, we planned for that. Heat is the biggest part of what we had at July 3rd. But outside of that, it was a fairly standard month. And we had 35 interactions at three events for public outreach activities with the fire department. Our dispatch to arrival time was 5 minutes and 18 seconds. Our average operating on-scene time for the month was 17 minutes and 38 seconds. You may recall that we've been really averaging around 13 minutes per call in the previous month. The instance that we had on I-40 increased that average length of time. Once those calls roll off, we expect to get back to the 12 to 13 minute average for those calls. Next page, you see just the, some photos from some of the training that we have. Over to the right, you will see some new extrication equipment that we have on our trucks. We've been working for a couple of years to be able to fund those. We were glad to do that. That greatly enhances our ability to service in the unfortunate event that we have the need for that equipment on a traffic accident. That's the fire department report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can on that. If I can't, I'd be glad to get those answers for you.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Okay.
The police report. Our training hours for the month of August, 2022, are 420, as opposed to 184 for July. We knew that July would be down some and August would pick up some just because of staffing and the lack of events during the month of August. Anytime you have the events and you're working those, that just limits your ability to have the training hours because that staff is assigned to duty assignment. The monthly operational report, July, we had 1,029 calls for service. August, we were down 921. That's the opposite of what we had in the fire department. But again, the fire department were medical calls or medical assistance. We think those were limited, a limited number of calls in a limited location. Arrests, for July, we had 81. August, 76. Domestic violence incidents, three in July, four in August. DUIs, zero in July, three in August. Drug charges, 25 in July, 10 in August. Theft, one in July and two in August. Citations, 124 in July to 101 in August. Traffic accidents, 22 and 19. Property damage only were 20 and 19. The injury, we had two injuries. That was the incident on I-40. And no fatalities thankfully for either month. That's the police department report generally. I'd be glad to answer any questions I can on anything police department related.
Are there any questions or discussions from the board of the police report? Go ahead.
Mayor, lastly, under my report, just some brief information for you. You may recall that we have right now on our website requests for bids for the fence project at the playground and the sidewalk project at the playground. Those bids close next Thursday. We did have a site visit for a mandatory pre-meeting or pre-bid conference with contractors related to concrete work. That was successful for us. We got some good information back on that. We expect to have all of those bids back next Thursday. As soon as we get those in, we will bring those to you so you can approve one of those bids and we can get that work underway. As it relates to the signage, we are in the process of completing that signs. Rather than bid, completing the design, rather than bid that out, we're going to send that out to a series of signed vendors and contractors so we can have a little more interactive detail with them and let them know what we want, and they can provide us back what we're looking for rather than kind of a generic bid process and you get what they send back to you. Obviously, the signage of the park or the playground is very important. It's kind of the centerpiece. As you go through the park and see that, we just feel we'd get a better product if we meet with those vendors and describe for them what we want, get a design and bring that back for your approval rather than a generic bid process, and we have to follow up with that. So as soon as we get that information back, we'll present that to you as well and start scheduling the final components and pieces for the grand opening of the playground.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion?
Mayor, I have one question. Mr. Collins, is that sign for Bowie Nature Park on 100, is that part of the bid?
We are going to include the sign for Bowie Park on 100 coming in as a replacement for that. So when we take the design out, you'll see signage and estimates for two signs, or at least two locations. The entrance way, kind of the monument sign that you see now with the marquee, that will go away and be replaced. And then, of course, all the signage that is on the playground itself.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item none, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Item 10, old business, rezoning of one acre located at 7269 Cox Pike. We will now open the public hearing on that item. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir. You look like you were about to stand up.
I probably, y'all know about my health issues, and I would just like the board to continue to pass so that we can get maybe a new resident here in the property, or in our city. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this piece of property? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor, will you read the ordinance, please?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-24. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning one acre of property located at 7269 Cox Pike, consisting of Williamson County map, tax map 042, HA parcel 001.00, from RS40 Residential to R20 Residential, property owner Paul Harrison. Move for approval?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mayor, I'd like just to talk through this for a second. So this area, the majority of the homes in that area do not sit on a full acre. So this is a one-acre lot in, I say a subdivision, an area with a number of homes that are on less than an acre. So this certainly, in my opinion, fits that area to subdivide that lot to have two R20 lots. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Item B, annexation of 35 acres located at 7348 Overby Road. We will open the public hearing for that. Is there anyone here to speak on that? If you'll give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Linda Baloo, and I live at 7118 Westview Boulevard. In Fairview, times are a-changing. Change is inevitable, but all change is not good. I probably have seen more change than most anyone in this room because I've lived here my entire 70 years. I'm here to ask you to vote against the annexation of approximately 34 acres on Overby Road into the city. There can only be one reason for the request to annex the property. That is to then request rezoning, which would allow more houses to be constructed on the property, since this parcel, along with the two adjacent parcels, would total approximately 51 acres. In fact, at the July 12th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, a representative with Ryan Homes, with written permission from the owners, stated that they plan to build 99 homes, or maybe a few fewer. As a part of the county, one home per acre can already be constructed on that property. 99 homes, or perhaps a few fewer, would be a dense development. We all know there would not be one home per half acre after green space, waste systems, roads, sidewalks, and curbing. I've heard Mayor Debbie Rennie say many times, let's build neighborhoods, not developments. The subdivision my husband and I live in, Darty Estates, is a neighborhood, mostly built in the 1970s with some neighbors who have been here from the beginning. We had some trees down in our yard recently, and two neighbors came with chainsaws just as quickly as they saw them and helped us get the debris cleaned up. One day, an area at the intersection of Harding Drive and Westview Boulevard, this was about a year ago, there was a big cave-in at the intersection. One of our residents, who happened to be my husband, but anyone would have done it, stood there at the site until we could get help there because he didn't want anybody to be walking or driving into that because it was a pretty big hole. This is a neighborhood we live in with no through streets and very little traffic. We know big changes would occur if the development on Overby Road happens and streets are cut through. But it could be minimized simply by not voting for this annexation because it'd still be able to build homes. There's one huge reason not to vote for this, Ryan Homes. They intend to purchase the property and develop it as they stated. Do we really want a company with their reputation developing in our community? Here's a little information about Ryan Homes. They've been in business 74 years, built in 15 states, have 6,600 employees, assets of $5.83 billion. They're not accredited by the Better Business Bureau. They have a 1.4 rating out of five on Consumer Affairs, a 1.39 rating on Better Business Bureau. Some quotes taken directly from BBB, Houzz.com, and Reddit ratings on Ryan Homes. Absolute worst customer service that I've ever received. They only care about throwing up homes as quickly as they can to make money rather than building quality homes. These are all quotes. Large gap in the roof of our house. Neighbor had to get roof repair for only two years. Would never recommend. Leaking pipes in less than two months. Four major cracks on the wall above my fireplace. Ryan Home provides only one maintenance repair free of charge. I regret it every day. Our custom-built home has zero insulation over the garage. Ordered expensive carpet, got the cheapest. Floor is buckling in every room. Garage door not installed properly. Cheapest of the cheap materials. Floor wasn't level. In a rush to build, they don't pay attention to details. We're in a hotel while they're fixing our plumbing. We gave up location where we wanted to be for a decent builder that wasn't Ryan. If you want your dream house, choose another builder. I'm aware that at the first reading of the annexation request, the vote was 4 to 1, with Major Rennie being the only dissenting vote. However, I'm asking you to vote against this request for the two reasons I have outlined. Number one, to prevent rezoning, which is in keeping with the character of the area and considering they can already build one home per acre. And two, that the developer in question is not reputable. I'm assuming that any of you who have a potential conflict of interest and stand to gain anything personally from this annexation will recuse yourselves from this vote.
My name is Jerry McCarty. I live at 7120 Harding Drive, also in Doherty Estates. When my wife and I moved here in 1977, I told her that one day they would be extending our road. The other road, Westview Boulevard, has houses in a cul-de-sac. Ours ended. So I knew the road would go on. It appears that day's now come. We don't so much object to the street being extended and more houses within reason being added as we do as to what we're hearing is, may happen. We don't so much object to Mr. King's property being annexed into the city if that's what he wants. The information we're getting about the planned development is what concerns us. Usually what happens in a case like this is the owner gets the property annexed, sells it to a developer, they request rezoning for higher-density housing. That's what we're expecting will happen because he can make more money from that development. I'd like to express my concern about the road in front of our house. I understand it may be the main thoroughfare for the construction traffic going in and out of this planned subdivision. There was a sign placed at the entrance to our subdivision several years ago, restricting the weight of trucks coming in and out. I assume that was for deliveries, whatever. You can see the sign. I have a picture of it. These dump trucks or concrete trucks that will be coming in for the subdivision will weigh much more than that. I'm sure you're aware. I spoke with our city planning engineer, or someone in his office, a week or so ago about the sign. He said that it was to protect the infrastructure under the street. I assume that is water lines, sewer lines, storm pipes, those kind of things. He talked like there was no special exception, a conditional use permit, or any variance of any kind. So I hope you'll, I don't know who oversees that, but I hope you'll watch that. We'd like to propose the new entrance come from Overby Road. This will be a new road altogether. All the services that will be coming in will be under that road, and that can be done during the construction of the subdivision. We can get used to a few extra cars coming through our street, but we hate to give up that dead end. We've had numerous breaks in water mains, as evidenced from the patches up and down the road before any of this ever starts. Then to just mention the cave-in at the intersection of Harding Drive and Westview Boulevard. These kind of things we expect to happen if we open our street to the construction traffic. I don't know who actually enforces it, but we will report when we see things like that going on. I do have several pictures if you'd like to see all the patches on our road already. I hope our street will be repaved in the near future anyway, but expect it will have to happen before, hopefully, and the infrastructure based up or raised up to handle this new traffic. It's dangerous now to pull out of our subdivision, turning toward Nashville to the left. During school traffic, I appreciate the center lane that was put in. At least we can get out there and wait for someone to let us merge over. What will be done to help that situation? I expect there will have to be a traffic light eventually. It was so nice to drive through our quiet little town and not have to stop at a red light when we first moved here. I hope you are looking into things like this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
Yes. My name is Deena Smith. I live at 7105 Harding Court, Fairview, Tennessee. We've lived there for 26 years. We have 1.17 acres. And our property backs up to property that has already been annexed. And it's beautiful. We enjoy it. We're grateful to the King family that we've been able to enjoy it all these years. We're very thankful for what we have. Speaking of, I'm not so elaborate as the speakers that you will hear and have heard, but we have a neighborhood. I was at work one day, and my next-door neighbor called and said, are you expecting company? And he never calls me at work. And I said, no. He said, well, someone parked in your circle and walked down your driveway, and the people that parked there dropped him off and went down the road. We have a little neighborhood watch among us, in other words. I called the police. The police circled the neighborhood several times and watched out for us. The person had walked to my back door, not to my front door. This is the kind of neighborhood we have. It's, I'm here to ask, please do not annex the property because I think that it will have a waterfall effect of, that I've seen with many neighborhoods, of downsizing the acreage that you build the homes on. I realize a lot of people can make a lot of money on that. Home builders, real estate people, people who service homes, all kinds of people can make a lot of money on a lot more homes, but I don't think it benefits the city. I don't think the city will make that much more money. I think individuals will, and that's great, and they have the right to make money. But I don't think it will service the home. And the high density of homes is very distressing. The idea that they would come through the street, the city streets, not my street. It's the city street, and I understand that. But to go through a neighborhood that's established shows me a complete disrespect. Complete disrespect, a complete violation, a rape, you would say, almost, of a neighborhood. And that's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. Mr. King can do whatever he wants with his property, and we understand that. But I didn't see him in the first meeting on July 12th. I see all these people. They showed up. I saw Ryan Homes standing here. That's what I saw. And I don't mean to be angry, but of course, you can understand it's very an emotional time for us. It really is. Changes are hard. We don't believe the road can hold the traffic. I was walking on the road also before her husband got there to the hole. A small child, it was at least this deep. A small child would have disappeared down that hole. We have small children on that street. It would have disappeared down the hole and not have been able to grab up and get out of that hole. We've seen it open up several times. This isn't the first time. It's really scary when you think of that, that our roads are going to have huge things going over them with a ton of weight. And that could fall in again. So how are we going to get out, you know? What are we going to do? I'm not looking for an out through Overby, but I'm sure that if this property, if anybody builds on this property, they can get out Overby. We've gotten out of one single entrance and exit ever since we have lived there. And I think that the other neighborhood will have probably two by the time it's done. That is, my other concern, trees. I would like to see the trees replaced, if any trees come down in the neighborhoods. I know that there will be, that's going to be addressed after this Castleberry fiasco. But I would expect many, many trees. but I would expect many, many trees to be replaced, and I would expect barriers of trees where we have zoning already and where houses are built. And so that's my request, and I do hope that you will not annex this property because I would like to see one-acre homes there and not a lot of traffic. So, that's me.
Thank you. If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
Nell Robbins, 7203 Harding Drive. Kinda hard to follow these people. I didn't get to reach out to everyone on the Board of Commission, but I did get to reach out to one person who provided a lot of information. I would like to go over some of those things today, please. Through conversation, it was stated to me, I quote, "It isn't necessarily about the city needing revenue, but more business decision of ensuring that we receive compensation for the services we provide. Fairview is better financially than we have ever been. It is to ensure that the other citizens do not have to pay for provided services for someone else to use the roads and have police and fire. Decisions like that are how you end up not being in good financial shape," end quotation. It is my understanding the city and the county have interlocal agreements, which were mentioned in our correspondence. In the interlocal agreements, it is my understanding that there are three things Fairview would have to provide Williamson County, only if called by the county in request. These items around, these items are around confirmed structure fires, confirmed collapsed buildings, and confirmed entrapments in a vehicle in which the county would have to call the city to assist. It is also my understanding that there are only around six of these types of calls to Fairview City to assist in Williamson County in a year's time. I understand that for these services, the city waives compensation. As in return, Williamson County waives compensation for services they provide to us. For those interlocal agreements goes both ways. Six calls a year at an average of one hour a call doesn't seem like a lot of fun spent at the end of the day. If it is felt Fairview City should be compensated for services provided to Williamson County, then should Williamson County be compensated for Fairview City services they provide to us? Another part of our conversation, it was stated to me, I quote, "If they submit for a different zoning at a later date, in that discussion will be had at that time. I do not support a higher density than what is called out in the 2040 plan, which is R-40." I feel like tonight's vote may still be based on financial growth of Fairview and not the well-being of the community. I asked tonight that if any of you are for annexation and not rezoning, why annex? I asked tonight that if any of you are for annexation, please, if not rezoning, why annex? Please consider leaving the 34 acres of land in Williamson County to stop further opportunity of high-density growth in our small town, the reason that we're all here. Please vote no to this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Resolution 28-822. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the resolution, please.
Resolution 28-22, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, map 046, parcel 050.00, 7348, Overby Road, 35 acres, owner Herbert and Barbara King.
We have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
So I guess I'll start the, the first portion of the discussion, if you don't mind, Mayor. I was able to, to talk to a number of you on the phone, and I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and voicing your concerns. I have some concerns about this property as well. And I know we're not supposed to talk about future zoning. That's another topic for another day. This is about annexation of that property, and I almost feel compelled to talk about it because that was what was brought up with every speaker that came up tonight and everybody that has addressed me in the past. What about the zoning? We want one-acre lots. We want this congruent or consistent from one subdivision, from one acre going to one acre. And when you look at our 2040 comprehensive plan, that is low-density, it is one-acre lots. That is what the community decided was going to be best for that location within our future land use map. One-acre lots, that's what the community said that they wanted to see during the 2040 comprehensive plan, and I'm all for that. Here is my concern, if we do not annex that property, like I talked with many of you, that property more than likely is going to be developed. It's a beautiful property. Whether we annex it and it's one-acre lots, or if we leave it to the county, that, that property is more than likely going to be developed, and a subdivision is going to go in there. If we annex that property, we have the ability to then hold the developer to the standards of the city of Fairview. And that, that means putting curb and gutter in, which the, the county does not mandate currently, holding them to our new stormwater ordinance plan, which is very comprehensive. So what you have currently in your subdivision will now be going into this new subdivision, and without that, the developer would not have to continue with what your development was to, to this new, new neighborhood. So in my mind, this, this piece of property is going to be developed if we do not annex it and they abide by the county rules and regulations, and there's no curb and gutter, they don't abide by our zoning for stormwater, and then at some point, the community wants it annexed into the city for all of the services, then we get to annex this part of this property without all of our standards that we, that we expect when we have a developer come in. So I, I hear each and every one of you, and the theme is very consistent and common, we want one-acre lots, period. That is your biggest concern. That's certainly my biggest concern as well. And to be able to protect that property, to make sure that we, we can control the, the standard that we have set here within the, the city of Fairview, I feel annexation is best because then we, I say we have control, we can make sure that that developer, we can hold them to the standard that the city of Fairview is, is demanding with, with all of our things for development of neighborhood. So that is why I'm for annexation, to protect that property, to protect the subdivisions around it, to make sure that it is consistent and congruent throughout. Fire, police, all the rest, we're not going to make any money off of, you know, responding to fires and the police and everything else. I, I understand that we would be providing them a service whether we allow the county to have it or we have it. My biggest concern is holding that developer to the city's standards, which are higher than the county's standards. And it sounds like this is going to be developed. Do we annex it now, or do we annex it later when everything is built out and it's not built to our standards? So that is, that is why I'm for annexation.
Mayor, if I could, so in short, I'll be brief. It's been a while since I've been on Westview or Harding Drive. Y'all don't have sidewalks or curbs now, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's irrelevant if the new neighborhood has sidewalks or curbs, right? Do y'all care? You want one-acre lots, right?
If the neighborhood needs to.
Well, if there's traffic now, we don't want your sidewalk.
Yeah. So, so you would want sidewalks and curbs in your neighborhood then, right? So here would be, here would be my suggestion, Mayor. I'd like to defer this vote, and I would, I would like for the developer to submit an annexation request, including what zoning they actually want. Because the zoning that I'm hearing, it's not my area of expertise, but I'm thinking they need an RS-15. So they're not, why are we wasting our time with a rezoning or an annexation request that none of us are gonna potentially approve? I would rather them submit it in totality, submit, we want the annexation with the coming in as a RS-15, as a RS-20, or as an RS-40.
Mr. Potter, just so that I know that I know what I'm doing. We have a motion on the floor and a second, so we would have to act on that before we act on any deferment, correct?
I'll make a correction. I, I vote to amend the motion that's on the floor, that we defer this item.
It's gonna be a second to your motion to amend.
And Mayor, just to help me understand, so we're gonna, for the annexation of this property, we're going to ask the property owner to submit what their zoning plan is?
I think that what we're requesting, since the developer spoke with written consent of the owner, Mr. Potter, you'll stop me when I become incorrect. The property developer, Ryan Holmes, spoke with written consent of the owner on what they plan to do with the property. She stated that they plan to build 99 homes. So I think it was obvious that there was rezoning requesting coming in.
It's not a, it's not a public hearing, ma'am.
Wait, public hearing is closed.
I think in fairness, that night, Mr. Potter also said, just to ensure the business at hand is the annexation, not the rezoning. And I, I think, I see it more as an opportunity to ensure that we meet the 2040 comprehensive plan with an R-40 future zoning, instead of passing it back to the county. In order for the county to consider rezoning, they would have to have a denial for annexation from the city. I think that the 20, the, the annexation with the R-40 is gonna meet some of the things, like curb and gutter would be more about the stormwater runoff versus a sidewalk on the future one. So we have invested so much in our staff, we've done so much with the stormwater ordinance, we're working on these other things, that I feel like if it's an R-40, one-acred lot community, I feel more confident in our staff from a viewpoint standpoint than from the county standpoint. Mayor, one last thing, if I could, in fairness, the, I'm gonna speak out of turn, maybe. I don't believe that the citizens are concerned with the RS-40 as mu, or the annexation as much as they are this board's ability to keep their word and vote for it to stay in RS-40. They feel the rezoning request will come before this board, and this board will vote, as history has shown, to probably rezone it. So I'll, I'll remove my amended motion, since there wasn't a second, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, if you'll call the roll, please. Do we need to repeat the motion in the second?
I would like you to, please.
Could you read it back to us, please?
I believe the motion in the second was just simply a motion to approve, motion by Commissioner Dawson, second by Commissioner Butler.
I think it was reversed.
Or reversed. But I don't think there was anything to the motion other than approval.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
No.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
No.
Motion carries.
Item 11, new business, first reading of ordinance 2022-25, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.52 acres of property located at 7319 Wiley Circle, consisting of Williamson County tax map 042 IA, parcel 005.00, from RS-40 residential to RS-15 residential. Property owner Lynn Eldridge, agent, T2 Engineering. Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nathan McVay with T-Square Engineering, representing the developer tonight. So this parcel before you, 7.52 acres, currently zoned R-40. It butts up against the recently approved Town Center, which would be to the south of this property. The max zone, or the max density we could get with an RS-15 would be 21 lots. Talking with the Water Authority Dixon County, the capacity here would be for 20 lots. In discussions with staff, our first layout yielded about 13 or 14 lots into reality for this parcel. We met with staff last week on site. Johnson Drive and Wiley Circle have some traffic issues there. The intersection's sort of skewed in front of the, the front edge of this parcel, so along with the development, we've also planned to do some upgrades to Johnson Drive and Wiley Circle there at our front edge to make it a four-way stop and to make it a little better, a safer intersection there. The comp plan for this is kind of split between two different zones. The first one's residential, transition neighborhood, which authorizes RS-15, and legacy neighborhood, which is also R-20. Most of the lots, though, since there are some corners, about 20,000 square feet on average, so. Again, I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor. So this, this property is, looks like it's butting up against the, the development for Town Center and all the way, is there potentially going to be connectivity with, with Town Center, that area? What are your thoughts?
So the, the concept we've talked with staff about is, since it's only 12 lots, and the lots are bigger and they match the existing Wiley Circle community, we've stubbed that as a cul-de-sac. However, we've allowed an open space strip and a 10-foot multimodal trail that would connect to the stub of the Town Center. So you have pedestrian access, but not necessarily vehicular access.
And Commissioner Dawson, I can, we, we are opposed to connectivity there. That, that section is not designed for, for connectivity, and there would be no plan whatsoever to use that. The cul-de-sac would be a, a, a true cul-de-sac, not a stub for future access.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Raney.
Aye.
Motion carries.
New business, item B, resolution 29-22. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the resolution, please.
Resolution of the city of Fairview, accepting the lowest bid for a single resurfacing project and authorizing this work. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mr. Collins, would you like to speak to that, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. This is a section of road that's Fernvale, Fernvale Road between Highway 100 and Old Nashville Road. There's a development that's taking place along Fernvale, and as a part of that development, the city was requiring that some road improvements be made. In reviewing that work, it just seemed to make sense that if we're going to do some work on that section of road, we need to resurface the entire road. If we don't do that, then we would have to key joint in some of the access. Key joint's a fancy word for a cut in the asphalt, where you have two pieces of asphalt that don't necessarily match each other, just presents problems over time. So our discussions were to resurface this entire length of road, include the new development as a part of that. The developers here tonight, and they've agreed to pay their share of the resurfacing of this road, so they will be paying their share. We would just pick up what they weren't going to do. But this is one of the rare instances where working with a developer to, to improve the roadway for its entire length just made sense for everyone. When we bid this work, the bids came out, the lowest bid was $39,945. The next highest, or the next lowest bidder was just over $45,000. In reviewing this work, we've recognized that resurfacing the intersection of Fernvale and and Old Nashville Road makes sense for us to do. There's a history of repair at that intersection, there's some road cuts at the intersection. And when doing this work, we believe we get a more stable, suitable roadway with a longer service life if we resurface the intersection as well. The developers' portion of this development, of this resurfacing, is $7,989, which they'll remit to the city. Our net out-of-pocket would be $36,456. That amount, even if we add the intersection with the lowest bidder, if they add the $4,500 to improve the intersection, it still comes out to be less than the next lowest bidder for only the Fernvale Road section. So, what we're asking for you tonight is a total project approval of $44,445, but a net cost to the city of $36,456. The developer will remit to the city of the difference of the $7,989.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion or any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye.
11C, Resolution 30-22, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview Board of Commissioners to name a consultant and a project engineer for capital projects to be funded by the Series 2021-B bond issue and other capital projects that selected. Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, you may recall that we, last year, completed the Series 2021-B bond issue, which provides the city today with about $8 million available for capital projects across the city. You may recall that, the discussions at the time with it, the work to be done with those dollars are going to be transformative to the city of Fairview, and we look forward to having that work complete. In doing the work, we recognize that we are going to need to consult with an engineering firm so they can do design, construction, engineering inspections, and all that comes with those projects. That's standard work in the road and infrastructure world, and we know that that's going to deliver us the best product. We submitted RFQs, or Request for Qualifications. We received qualifications and proposals back from six firms. Staff and I reviewed each of those firms, and we settled on Reagan Smith Associates for the firm that we would suggest that the city go with. The resolution you have before you tonight authorizes me to engage Reagan Smith Associates and to complete any contracts-related documents that we need to have, so we can get this work started. If this is approved tonight, we'll schedule a meeting with Reagan Smith as quickly as we can, hopefully next week, start outlining those projects and preparing the projects for bid. We have a couple of years or a little over to get this work complete, to maintain our tax-exempt bond status for the dollars we have in the bank. There's a lot of work to be done, and we think this is the best opportunity for the city to move forward and get the most work we can get done in the shortest amount of time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Nothing to say, thank you, Mayor.
You're not asking what the score is of the UT game?
Not a UT fan.
Commissioner Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the proclamation that we had tonight for the drug overdose. I think all of us have been affected in some way with addiction, members or families, friends, and so forth. And this has been extremely hard on our community, so any organization that brings awareness to overdose, to addiction, I personally thank you, for sure. So, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan that we talked about tonight, the community coming together to determine what we're going to do with property, and then also holding the commissioners accountable for that 20 Comprehensive Plan once annexation is complete as well. And we know that the 2040 Comprehensive Plan specifically states with this property that that is one-acre lots. So, we look forward to any discussion in the future about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the citizens for coming out tonight and voicing your concerns and your opinions. We appreciate it. Wish more citizens would come out for things like this and voice their concerns. I'll go ahead and step out and just tell you, for what it's worth, should a rezoning request come my way on your property for anything less than what it already is, it'll be a no vote from me. So, I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight as well. I don't take my votes lightly, and the annexation to me is one part, but the rezoning, I will hold them accountable to what we need to do moving forward with that. On another note, my thoughts and prayers go out to Gary Wild, Courtney, his wife, and their son Colt and Waylon, and, I'm sorry, and the loss of their son Noah in a tragic accident. Gary Wild is a local business owner here in Fairview, own a business right next to him in the Public Shopping Center. We have been longtime friends and colleagues, and this tragic accident has really been hard for the family and everyone who knows him. So, I would ask that you keep him in your thoughts and prayers, and his family. Also, like I always say, let's just help keep our community beautiful and just help pick up trash and not throw it out. Thank you.
And I have nothing tonight, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.